Let's go ahead and call this meeting of the Isani City Council's order if we can all rise for the pledge of allegiance. During roll call, we have all council members present. Do we have any public comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to adopting the agenda. I think we have a couple of modifications.
Yes, we do. Good evening, Mayor and Council. We do have the addition of a business item, case six, to consider resolution, authorizing staff to submit a request to the Minnesota management through the state for a pedestrian crossing. With new legislative actions, there's quite a considerable amount of state funding available. And staff would like the opportunity, if given that, by council here this evening to apply for funding to pay for the remainder portions of the pedestrian bridge that we have some federal funding already allocated for. I know this conversation had come up before, but we'd like to discuss it again this evening. Thank you. Oh, and then also to remove K three zoning code section sixteen signs to discuss that at a future date.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Merrill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carries five zero. Proclamations, we have employer celebration day. And I'll just go ahead and read a couple of these real quick. I'll try to make it somewhat interesting for you and not too boring while I'm reading, but. So the city of Isani, whereas employers and employees are a dynamic part of the city of Isani and Minnesota's economies, and whereas the promotion of our employees and their talented staff showcase the strength and success, which is an integral part of the city of Isani's economic development strategy, and whereas all Isani employers located within the city of Isani provide jobs which significantly contribute to the city of Isani's standard of living and economic vitality, whereas the city of Isani has approximately two thousand people that are employed within its corporate limits, and whereas employees contribute to the economic success of Isani businesses by buying local and supporting other Isani businesses, and whereas the city is sponsoring an appreciation luncheon for the employers and their employees on July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three, highlighting certain businesses with milestone Isani anniversaries. Now therefore, I, James Gordon, Mayor of the city of Isani, do hereby proclaim that the day of July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three shall be observed as Mayor's employer celebration day. So we're looking forward to hosting as many employers as possible on that day and want to thank them for everything that they do for our community. And then we have a proclamation honoring our class of twenty twenty-three. Whereas this time of year is cause for celebration as Isani students are presented as graduating seniors and paving the way toward improving the quality of life for young people with a graduation diploma, and whereas the class of twenty twenty-three makes our citizens proud of their commitment to responsible citizenship and support opportunities for graduating seniors in our community that include higher education, housing, employment, and recreational activities, and whereas the class of twenty twenty-three will be our future leaders, pioneers, creators, motivators, and role models. Therefore, I, James Gordon, Mayor of the city of Isani, do hereby congratulate all Isani graduates of the class of twenty twenty-three for their dedication, hard work, and commitment. So it's something to celebrate. It's a job well done and good to see that we've got a strong class this year, so. Do I have a motion to approve the city council minutes from May sixteenth, twenty twenty-three city council meeting and the committee of the whole meeting on May sixteenth, twenty twenty-three?
Motion to approve.
I'll second it.
I have a motion from Councilman Heeman and a second from Councilman Lundin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Announcements, we have committee of the whole meeting coming up on Tuesday, June twentieth at five P M. We have a planning commission meeting on Tuesday, June twentieth at six P M. And we have a city council meeting on Tuesday, June twentieth at seven P M. Are there any council committee reports? Hearing none, we'll move on to business items. We have K one, the concept plan for three oh eight Whiskey Road Northeast.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we have a concept plan that we'd like you to review for three oh eight Whiskey Road Northeast. We were approached by the home improvement shop about a possible locations for market rate apartments in Isani. And staff directed Ms. Carol, who's here tonight, to a few different locations that we thought would work for zoning and density purposes. So she liked this site and has put a purchase agreement on this four acre parcel to construct two thirty unit apartment buildings with the condition that their concept is approved tonight. The change in use will require a zoning and comprehensive plan amendment and would be applied for through the P U D process. The current location is zone neighborhood business district, which does not allow for multifamily, but it does allow for mixed use. So we would allow for retail on the bottom with a significant number of apartments on the top because we don't have a density restriction in that district, so it could be more than sixty units. So we do think this is a good use and transitional use for this district, considering the housing that is directly behind these parcels. In greater Minnesota, it is difficult, as you know, to find developers who will consider mixed use buildings. So this is probably the best use that we can see for this site. Staff feel that this would be in line with the highest and best use, and if the project is approved, we would recommend rezoning to our four multiple family residential so that it would use the underlying zoning district for all of the other zoning setbacks and such forth. You cannot take action on this item tonight because it has to go through the planning commission, but the developer would like feedback on the concept before bringing it to planning commission in August. So yeah, if you'd like to speak to the potential applicant, she's here tonight to answer questions. Otherwise, I can answer them too.
I have a couple of questions here for staff. So I was looking at the schematic here and it's only a ten foot easement off the road. Is that standard on County Road five or is, because I'm worried about future development. Right now, we have kind of a mess with the QuickTrip intersection because the parking lot's so close to the road that we cannot put a two lane roundabout in. So I would rather see something where we have adequate setbacks, like most county roads are eighty feet from the center of the road. And I don't know what ours is, but that doesn't look like enough for any sort of addition of a lane or anything in the future. So we're kind of going to be bottlenecked there if we ever need to grow.
I guess the county doesn't have a restriction for setbacks, so it would be the city's setback standards for a parcel. The two intersections that they're showing right now, the one off of Whiskey and the one off of Heritage, already have turn lanes for those locations, so it's already built into their geometrics for their traffic flow. So I wouldn't anticipate added, you know, traffic needs for where these two connection points are. And it's already a signalized intersection, so you know, there isn't any long term plan of changing it to a roundabout style. So I wouldn't really see the need to require, you know, extra space around that intersection for that possible change. But the county will have review of these plans as well for how those entrances tie into their master plans and whatnot. And, you know, maybe they'll identify that they have a master plan of adding a lane or something that, you know, may have an impact. But given they don't have the right of way, you know, they really, they'd be somewhat restricted on what they could even ask for, I guess, through this parcel.
I guess I'm concerned. So if it's sixty units, they say the average is two vehicles per unit, so that's an extra hundred twenty vehicles per day in that intersection on that road. So I just see it as a potential hazard there for traffic and future developments. Like I said, I'm, I like the idea, but I don't like the placement. I think ten feet is way too close for me personally, but.
Look, I'd add to that, T O. If there wasn't a stoplight there, I would a hundred percent agree with you. There's already a traffic stop there. QuickTrip is a different story. There isn't one there. So now we've created a problem, you know. Unfortunately, that was never addressed when that was built.
Yep.
There's already traffic control there already, so I, it's, it's going to cut that.
I think it'd be worse if it was some kind of retail place on the corner.
Or another gas station.
Five hundred cars coming in out of there a day, possibly, you know.
A thousand.
But that's not, that's not a retail lot, though.
Constant.
Yes, it is. That's what it's for.
Oh, it is retail? I thought it was a mixed use.
Neighborhood business district. It could be a gas station. It could be retail.
It's been sitting.
Right.
Sitting for a long time.
I would just hate to see if we needed to add another lane there for some reason. I mean, if the city continues to grow, I mean, look at Elk River. They're doing overpasses and all sorts of wild stuff that's going to cost a bunch of money. When we have these decisions now to make to try and limit the chance of these things, I mean, you might not see it now, you might not see it in ten years, but twenty years from now, that stuff's still going to be there, and we can't just move a parking lot or an apartment building to make room for a wider road.
You're doing it in Cambridge.
Yeah, but it's really expensive. We don't want to be in that pickle. So I, I guess I would like to see a little bit more room, if possible.
Just to speak to smart development, it is smart to have condensed development for pedestrians and planning, oversizing isn't necessarily the best long term way to plan for a city in roads, so just.
How much retail do we have left lots like this?
A lot on the east side and in the.
On five or Heritage Boulevard?
On Heritage, we have, on the east side, there's quite a bit of, if you look at our zoning map, that entire corner of five and sixty-five down to the neighborhood business is all available retail.
Northwest corner to the intersection is that whole cornfield.
And then we still have three lots available over by Little North Boutique and Dairy Queen.
So there was no other lots that would be a better fit for this?
This actually is a really great transitional use for the housing that's right next to it. A gas station would probably be frowned upon by the neighboring. We'd probably hear more complaints about that. This is a good transition from retail. We're probably considering there's a gas station and shops right across the street. In the near future, we won't be seeing likely more commercial development happening right there.
What are the back of those garages going to be constructed of?
That was something we did.
Same thing with the garbage. I had a question about that, what that would look like.
That will actually be all decided and can be weighed upon at the planning commission meeting during the site plan review. But they do, they have put peaks here to add to the curb appeal to make it more decorative looking there. Yeah, sorry. I know I'm. Yeah, do you want to? Sorry, I can't do it.
Fix it, Jade.
Well, while they're passing that out, I'll just say kind of my piece on this. I love it. I think it's, I think it's a good thing for the city. I think it's, if it's done right, I'm excited. I'm really excited for it, so. And I think my initial thought, too, was about the traffic, and you say, well, you know, is that going to kind of cause problems there? But I leave out of my neighborhood every day on Fifth, which is the next block down. And it's really not that bad getting out. Certain times of the day, just like anywhere else, it's rough, but, you know, that's not going to add that much traffic to to what we have going on. And like Dan said and Steve, I mean, it's already a controlled intersection. It's, I don't see any real major issue there, and I think it's, I think it's an excellent thing. I mean, it's something that we need in town here, so.
Close to schools?
Yeah, close to, yeah, both the middle school and the, and the.
Businesses across.
Yeah, right, right. I think it's awesome.
Actually, these garages would actually, they would probably, these other residents that are existing would probably benefit from all that because they're going to cut down a lot of noise traffic.
For sure, yeah.
Buffer.
I, the only concern I see right now would be some kind of buffer between the townhomes, the twin townhomes, or the twin homes, I should say, other than shrubbery.
That was my recommendation and why the garages are closer to the street. That originally planned was because I wanted them, I thought their best choice would be to add a buffer, so the ponds are also in between. So it's trees and then ponding that will separate them. And it's just a two story building, so it's not three stories or more, so it shouldn't seem, you know, overpowering to housing.
I think a tall privacy fence would be a good thing for the residents that are already there.
Which we can require.
Yep, so that's all.
So I'm hearing overall consensus that.
I like it, but I won't personally approve it with only a ten foot from the road. It's just not enough for future, so.
But Mobile would, if we ever changed anything, Mobile would have to change their pumps and everything too, so I don't see that ever happening.
Actually, it's fifteen feet. There's another five foot between that ten, the sidewalk plus another five feet. It's actually fifteen feet.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see any problem with that, I guess.
Nope, I don't either.
There's houses that are closer.
With the sidewalk or saying it's fifteen.
They'd be going ten feet off of the property line. They just don't know where that is specifically yet on here because they're just going over the G I S, so these aren't completely accurate.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I.
Yeah.
You want us to kind of go one by one or what?
It just, yeah, I think it'd be nice to just have a good consensus for that.
Did we get an answer on that garbage building?
Oh, go, we'll go over that in planning commission. It'll still have to meet.
Yeah, I guess I just would really like just an overall consensus, I guess, if you're, if they should move forward, you don't have to do a roll call vote or anything, but.
Overall consensus, I'm, I, we, one of, I think we're, any consensus that we'd like to, like to see it, for sure, so. Thank you guys for considering Isani and we, you got my support. I'm excited to see it, so I'd love to see you build it. Okay. Sure. Okay. Yeah, yeah. Sure. Awesome. No, I think it's a good fit and, yeah, we've got a great staff. Stephanie does a great job and, and, yeah, we've got a good team, so.
If you enjoy working with the city on this project, you could always think about, we could use some senior housing too. If you want to tackle, I'll tackle another project.
Awesome. That's, that's great to hear. Well, cool. Well, yeah, I think we've got our consensus there, so. Well, thank you guys for coming in.
All right, moving on to K two, consider resolution authorizing for phase one of well capacity study.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. So with the, the growth we've been seeing over the last few years, we're starting to see that we're maxing out our pump capacities. So we, we basically did a quick little background summary on this letter that we submitted to you guys. Essentially, there's two elements that we're trying to look at here. Peak day and total yearly use. And we got a table here on the peak day, which we've been, we've been maxing out actually right now, and Matt can speak on that here in a sec. Essentially, we're using all of our pumps to meet our peak day. And the industry standard is to have your largest pump offline, so essentially, any one of your pumps that might be broken or not able to be running, we want to be able to function with one off. And so the safest way is to plan for the biggest one to be out of commission and still meet that peak. And if you see these numbers here, that's this, the firm well capacity is that term, having your largest pump offline. And as you see, at least on the max day, we've exceeded that each of the last few years. With that said, when our tower is offline right now, we just drained it last week. We're currently in this hot drought kind of condition. We're kind of hitting what would be those peaks that we usually would see in late July, August, and I guess if Matt wants to talk on that.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, just to, so you know, each morning, all three wells have had to turn on, and at night, some, occasionally, some nights, all three wells have been running. And we're stretched at twenty-four hundred gallons a minute, and that's the most we can pump. We can't pump any more than that, and we're hitting that demand. So if something were to happen during that time, if somebody opened a hydrant, we had a water main break, we'd be in trouble.
So, so that's that, the peak day issue, and right now, I'm hoping we just got past that hottest, you know, worst scenario kind of thing we have going on, and temperatures look like they're going to get a little better, chances of rain coming, you know. But right now, we're pushing those limits, literally right now, and hopefully it eases off and we have another month and a half to go where we're not going to have water in that tower, so this is a really tight scenario if we keep having hot, dry days. But so that's, you know, one of the issues that we're looking at is, you know, we're kind of getting into that risk area and that industry standard would say we would want another, another well just to handle that. The other part of that is volume for the total year. We're currently permitted with the D N R to draw two hundred and seventy million gallons a year. And there's a graph in that letter as well that shows the projected, if we continue with the growth that we've been having and we don't do really any water restricting or enforcement, you know, that trend line is showing that we're going to hit that D N R permanent amount by a little after twenty twenty-six. At which point, we need to have gone through this kind of extensive process to prove that, yes, we need the water and prove that, yes, we need to get in whichever aquifer that we can. And the Mount Simon one is the one where our other wells are in, and we'd really prefer to be in that one. But you have to prove that you can't validly get into like shallower, kind of lower quality aquifers and still make that work. And, and that's kind of where we sit right now. It's a, it's a two year process, really, to go through the process, validate the need, validate the ability to have to go into it, find the property, find the route to run the main to the treatment plant, and then be able to have that all constructed. So, so what we laid out here is just to go through that first phase of evaluation to determine if we're going to be able to prove that getting into the Mount Simon is going to be where we need to go, validate how much more volume we might be wanting to try and go after, and find the location that that optimal well site might be, whether it's a city owned parcel already or a parcel that's available that, you know, it could start the process of evaluating, purchasing, or whatnot. So with that said, I guess, do you have any questions?
Yes.
Yep.
I'm the new guy on the block, but I'm wondering, is this the first time this is brought to council's attention that there could be a water shortage here within the next three years?
Yeah, so we had it projected that we weren't going to need this well for, I think it was almost ten years. But because of our use being at ninety-five gallons per capita per day, that is extremely high, and this growth going so quickly. So basically, it was about five years ago or so, we did the asset management plan is when, at that time, and at those rates, we came up with the projection of twenty thirty something. And now, over these last few years, in these last three years of peaks, we determined we better take a better look here. And, and now all these rates have gone up per person, and we've been growing so fast that it's, it's time to, you know, do something about it.
Can I get a copy of that plan that he just referred to?
And Mayor and Council, I do believe that because of the project that we're doing, we took the water tower offline, that amplified a deeper, amplified a lot of analysis that we had to do and took a real deep dive into the usage and all these things. So that's helped us to find out that, wow, we, with all the growth that we had, we really need to look into this further.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think it's a, everybody running around like your hair is on fire kind of moment or anything like that. It's just with the, with the water tower being down because of the, the painting and the, you know, refurbishing the inside and everything, you know, that's, that's causing this to kind of come to light in more of a, you know, a fashion where you can really see it, I guess. I mean, because you're figuring, okay, we want to be prepared. If our biggest resource of water goes down, then, then we still need to be able to be covered and having that fourth well would, would do that for us, so. But in a typical situation where everything's well and fine, I mean, you're not going to come into the tightness that we've had there on a regular basis. That's more of just the very peak days that we're talking about where you're, you're charting that in this first chart. But, but yeah, no, I think it's something we definitely want to consider and look into, I would say, so.
Are we going to be in the same situation with the sewer?
No, no, sewer system, well, we have that, you know, we have a long term, again, that asset management plan is looking at going to a mechanical plant instead of the ponds. And that is that same idea. We have it projected for in the twenty forties, I believe. Unless we have like a large industrial type user that would really be having a lot more wastewater. But right now, our wastewater system is, is capable of handling what we expect, and residential growth isn't really the, the high risk thing right now, but same idea, we did that asset management plan to project out everything. And, you know, we can certainly look at it again, but that really had a, a driving force was going to be large industrial users as opposed to like these peaks, these, you know, peak day things are more, everybody's running their sprinklers at the same time in the morning, taking their showers. And it's more of a residential caused peak issue. And the other piece of this study that we're going to have to do, and part of the getting approval to get another well in the Mount Simon aquifer usually has some water restriction element to the requirements. And us being at this ninety-five gallons per capita per day is, is very high. And probably part of that approval process is we're going to have to show that we're doing some enforcement or, you know, because we do have it in our ordinances to restrict water use to every other day and those types of things, but we just aren't. And so that's why on this graph.
Did we change that ordinance at some point, though? I thought we talked about getting rid of that.
For what part of it?
Well, where we were going to restrict water usage on odd days or even days or.
That still is within city code.
Still in city code?
It is.
I think it was just the enforcement wasn't going to.
Oh, yeah, you're right. Yep. I think that's, yeah.
It's complaint based, even for that.
That's right.
So our issue is part of the, the D N R's direction is going to be part of the approval to get to draw more water is that we have to show we're not just using whatever we want. And so that's where this yellow line comes into play. The likely result of a study here is probably going to include something to do with a volume, you know, rate control or, you know, trying to get our average use down to what's more common. And so in the process of evaluating this, we hopefully will have found a way to either public information, you know, over having to maybe do enforcement directly, but you know, part of that process may have to be getting people to use less on those peak moments. And then if that happens at the same time, that pushes us out to the twenty thirty now timeline again, which is getting closer to where we always were projecting it.
What year?
This graph here is just saying if we get, if we get some good water use, you know, under control to kind of more common range, that that can push it out another four years before we have to do that.
I don't want to kick this can down the road, but I, I would like to see somehow getting the word out more. I mean, this is unusual period of time we've had right now. I mean, it's the driest. I've seen it this early for a while. And I realize our water supply is being taxed big time. I'd like to see it get kicked down the road for a little bit, try to get word. I'd like to see it get kicked down the road for a little bit, try to get word out to, at least on watering lawns, and maybe even trying to conserve water a little bit more to push this out so we can budget it. I, I think it's something like this getting sprung on council right, I, I think we should, should have it budgeted out.
The thing with the funds for this is it would come from your, your sewer and water fund, and, or the water fund, I guess it would be, right? So.
Without raising water rates?
This would come a hundred percent from the water funds.
In there right now, but I mean, what's the cost of, if we add a fourth well, I mean, do we, do we have cash in that fund to cover that cost? I would imagine we gotta be set up fairly well for that, huh?
Well, and the Mayor and Council, the value of talking about this now versus later, I think we are early enough in the process. This is just for the first phase, allowing engineer to do some work, doing some study, find out if the DNR, where will they let us put a well? One of that is land acquisition is a big part, but being able to put the well in down the road later is, is a good thing, and we will plan for that. But knowing where we will, when we do the study here, find out where it'll go, how much funds we need to do, to do that before Mike does his rate study, which is gonna be worked on this year, will be valuable information and data for him to include in that. It is an enterprise fund, it will be able to fund itself, but I think we will be able to plan for it. It's not that we have to have a well tomorrow, but we need to find out where we can put the well.
Yeah, and, and if you look at the, the schedule here, you know, like this is to approve doing the study to figure out where it could go and, and whether we can be in the right aquifer and things. The actual construction would be, you know, late twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. That's when the fees would be incurred at the fastest we could go. And so, that, you know, the actual cost, the construction cost of putting in the well is, you know, a couple of years out where it would be able to get funded or budgeted for. And I do believe the, the water fund is built up because it's in the game plan as it is to do this eventually. But this first step, you know, the price difference is between one and a half million and three million, depending on if we find a good, close location near the current treatment plant, and we already own the property, and like all those ands can determine a hundred percent different price, depending on if we're able to get in the right aquifer we want and get in the right location we want. And so, to figure that out now, and even if we figure out now that, yes, that's what we want to do, but let's get hard on, on use, and we track that, and now our study's done, we're like, here's the perfect spot, DNR's gonna approve us. You know, we know what we're gonna do, but let's, let's watch. Oh, we're actually gonna have the odd even thing going on, and oh, everybody cut their numbers down twenty percent? Well, now, now we see that we can not actually have to move forward for two extra years, three extra years. But we have already figured out where it goes, and we've done that evaluation. So in, in two years, we're not in, you know, frantic mode, and we haven't done the evaluation yet. Because that's when, that's when we're gonna be in a tight spot.
What was the evaluation cost?
Thirty-nine, though.
Thirty-nine? That's the thirty-nine thousand seven hundred.
And one thing when we were, Mayor and Council, when we were talking about is that the land part of it, that's what kind of made me nervous, is because we have a lot of land that would have been great, except for we sold it all in our industrial park. So when you start adding up the cost of all the piping, if you're to go on the far ends of town, getting back to that water treatment plant, that adds considerable cost. We do have in the capital improvement plan for twenty thirty-five for that well, because as Jason mentioned, we did know that it was gonna be planned at two, just a shy under two point five million dollars. And that's the city paying cash for it, not bonding. So as Mike talks about, we, we might have to slide it forward a little bit, but we did account for that cost. Just might come sooner than later, but at least I think we should lock in some land and find out where this can go, or that cost may really jump higher if we're doing a lot of piping.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, just at the capacity we're at right now, and pumping one point four million gallons a day is what we're averaging right now, I really think we should put on some water restrictions and enforce that ordinance of odd even days.
I, I agree. I think it's our job as council too to try and, I mean, between all of us, we should know every member of this community already, so we could maybe try and educate people. I didn't even know that was an ordinance or a thing.
And we, we currently have the liquor store, City Hall, the BMX, two parks that are irrigated too. We can shut those irrigation off too while this is at least, the tower is down, to try and conserve some water and show an example.
I mean, could we, could we restrict all yard watering? Or is that not a?
I don't know if we wanna.
We're not to that point?
Councilman Merrill, I don't think we're at to that point. We did have maybe some internal discussions about, we have quite a few new homes going in, and they have new sod. They're exempt from that ordinance, so they can water every day, all day. We did talk internally about maybe having some of the builders hold off till the project's done, so we get the tower back online of putting that sod in, just so, we don't want anyone to put sod in, and if we do put in a big restriction and their sod dies, it's a big cost factor for them, and negative outlook for the city, so we want to make sure we don't get into that.
So is that more of a concern if we have a well pump go out during all this, than we do something like that?
Anything could trigger, trigger an issue. If a well went down, we'd be, we'd have to put some critical water deficiency out there to make people use less water, whatever that would take. It would, we would really have to do something if a well went down, had a water main break, that would be, it would be, we'd have to get water shut off right away.
So do we, do we have an emergency plan like that, like a worst case, like, you know, we talked about, for each department have the ten or twenty-five percent emergency fund that we talked, or emergency plan that we talked about? Do we have one of those for the water? If, like, say we, like, the first plan of action would be to tell them to stop watering lawn. Second plan of action would be to close city buildings, or what, is there a plan for that, or?
Yeah, there is a critical, critical water deficiency, that is in the ordinance. We, there is a plan for that, what would happen.
And the city administrator can make that call, so we're not waiting for a council meeting if that, if deemed to be an emergency like that. We can post doors, we can put on our website, social media about the restriction. We do have plans in place if we had to do that. We've always had those plans, those aren't new with the project, so it's not to get people too worried about it. It's just to get people aware, and that, it probably is a great idea to start enforcing the even odd. And right now, just to see, I, I think what we saw on Facebook was a lot of people didn't know that we had that. So to see what our water usage looks like over the next week here, as people are like, oh, okay, if you didn't know.
I think explaining, if we do put that on Facebook, explaining the reason why we're asking them to do that. And I, I hate the idea of enforcing stuff like that, because, do you know, what's Travis gonna go knock on their door and say, stop it? You know, I mean, how are you gonna enforce it? So, so I mean, I think you just explain, here's why we want to draw attention to this, that, hey, the, you know, we're working on the water tower project, it would really help us out if, you know, if you were able to water on the even and odd days or whatever. But, but yeah, I mean, I think threatening people with, oh, we're gonna, you know, what are you gonna do?
Right.
Water my lawn whenever I damn well please, you know.
Yeah, I actually saw the, I saw the post on Facebook, and I had to make sure it wasn't like posted on April first, because I honestly thought it was like a, like a joke, and I was like, I've never heard of that before, but it's, yeah.
Every city has that.
Yeah, sure.
I, I for one, I think we should go ahead with the study, just because it needs to get done sooner than later.
Yep.
And I don't disagree that we should maybe get out there and tell people, cut back on watering your lawns for the best purposes for yourself. The study's gotta get done, irregardless.
Yep.
And I'd rather be more prepared than all of a sudden, all of a sudden, we're getting the call, we gotta have a meeting now and discuss this.
And I had another question too, when you're concerned like land, land acquisition for another well, is there, is there any sites for another water tower in the future?
So, so we don't have any defined sites for that yet either. That's kind of a, a slightly separate reasoning behind it, so we didn't really want to have to incorporate that additional evaluation, you know, and the cost and everything right now. But it is a valid topic that's gonna be coming also, but that one.
Running out of land.
Like, they're basically looking for completely different reasonings for their sites, right? You want to have the well be as close to the treatment plant as you can, and still get in the water, the aquifer that you want. The tower, you want as far away from the other tower, and in the direction that growth is going. So right now, east side is where we have the most space in the, in the, you know, the master planned, you know, zoning and whatnot. So, you know, we would think, yeah, you know, having it out to the east. But depending on how the growth goes, at this point, we don't need the tower, I mean, we.
That's a, yeah, but the land acquisition maybe is something to discuss.
Yeah, so, I mean, that I, I mean, that could get done at the same time, but we were just trying to keep it, you know, defined to the, the issue at hand, I guess. But it's absolutely another, another topic that's gonna be coming down the road here.
So I have a question, or you can go ahead.
Yeah, bef- before I was on council, I questioned, you know, our water supply in the city of Isani because of the splash pad. And when I heard it was gonna take forty thousand gallons a day, I was really concerned about whether our water system could, you know, be able to handle that kind of capacity. Obviously, I, I didn't get the right answers, because if I would have got the right answers then, I would have realized that, no, we're really close to capacity right now, and I would have probably had more to say about it before, before the approval process. So, we do need the study, we're gonna need it one way or the other, I agree. So the, the main problem is two hundred and seventy million gallons is our allotment from the DNR. The DNR owns the aquifer. They're the ones who put in water restrictions when we have water restrictions, unless Matt thinks that we should do it. But most of the time, it comes from the DNR, is that, is that true?
Well, they manage the aquifer, and they're the ones that permit out how much each municipality can draw out of it. They're not gonna specifically restrict our use of what we're already allowed to use, but if we go over that maximum, well, now we're not in compliance with the permit, and then, you know, that's where, I guess, yeah, it would get into some of their enforcement on restriction.
I do want to chime in a little bit on that, because they can restrict it, actually. So we have a, a water appropriations permit, as you said, that gives us some. But we actually have to do a water supply plan every ten years that they approve and review. And that one, we have to have different measures put into place to get that document approved every ten years of what we will do to restrict. And they can, because we've seen emails, not in our region, but where they code the state, you know, this is a, we're in the orange, we're in the red. And some states do, depending on the level of the aquifer, they can tell you, since we give you your permit, we will enforce you to do what you said you would do if there was a critical deficiency in your area. So they can limit it.
Last year, I believe, we were two hundred and forty million gallons for the year. Two seventies are max, last year, we were two hundred and forty million, is how many gallons we pumped.
So I, I have another question kind of related to that. So you have all this information in these graphs saying we use ninety-five gallons per day. Does that account for the six gallons per day that it's gonna be for each resident? So now you're gonna be at a hundred and one? Because the splash pad, if it uses forty thousand a day, divided by roughly seven thousand, that's six gallons per day that you're adding to the average use of the city, so does that? So are we actually worse off than what these graphs say? Because you're, we're gonna have the splash pad coming on this year?
Well, so these, these are graphed with the projection of continuing the same growth that we've had with like new homes. And so, if the new homes were exactly, you know, increasing at the same consistent growth that we had had, then that six, you know, gallons would be in addition to that. And again, it's an average trend line, so it just depends on whether growth is as hot as it has been this year. I think we're trending on about the same pace, so it is. You know, whether or not everything slows down next year, you know, that's where, this is just a linear trend line of if it keeps going the way it was, this is where it looks like it's gonna go. And that's why, you know, we want to start thinking about it right now. And if we can get that odd even day thing going to, to lower down those peaks, and if we can get some of that, you know, just general reduced water usage on just the average person's overall total, you know, then we can get it back to the projections, you know, that we were hoping for when we made that asset management plan, you know, originally. But right now, we gotta do something about it, I guess.
Is there any way, I know we have, obviously, we have individual water bills, but are there any outstanding outliers that we can sort of look at? I mean, I know at our house, we only use, between the three of us, it's less than sixty gallons a day. So I guess I don't know where all the rest of it's going. Is there any way we can sort of pinpoint the, if we have to, the people that are using too much? Or is that a reasonable thing with city code, or?
There are ways to, in city code, you can adopt tiered structures, which is a way to conserve water. It's one of the things that the DNR does give as an option. When we do that water supply plan, we did not adopt that in the city, so we don't have a tiered structure that, so if the more you use, the more you pay. Kind of, it's just something that the council previously did not choose to, to adopt, but it's just one of many conservation measures you could do.
Okay.
Can we add something to the water bill each month stating?
Reduce your water use.
To reduce, you know, do the best you can to reduce your water, is it already on there?
I don't think it is on there, because we do the postcard water bills, we have a, like, a one statement. We can definitely try to put something together. I think as Mayor Gordon mentioned, trying to get the information out, because a lot of this is tied to the project that we're doing right now.
Sure.
And put some more information out there to get the public informed.
We do have the Isani, and we'll be going out next week, likely, so we could add some information in there too.
Would it be, is it against city ru- rules to maybe go put like little door hangers on everybody's door that says we're in a shortage for, for water, maybe try and conserve some water, is that?
No, we have had to do some things like that for other items. It does just take public works time and stuff, but we can. If we got into where we were going to be in that critical deficiency state where we had to have people do that, we would probably take the time to notify that.
Usually, I mean, we don't usually have this problem, it's just.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think.
Unusual circumstances.
Water tower down at the same time.
I don't think we would be having this discussion, the capacity we are, if we had our water tower online.
Sure.
Yeah, no, I think, I think that's the, you, you, it's not something, like I said earlier, you want to run around like your hair's on fire, because that's not, that's not the situation that we're really dealing with. And, and I get where you guys are coming from with the splash pad. And I was, of course, against the splash pad until we found a better way to fund it, where it was park dedication funds and not general fund money. So it was money that had to be spent on new park amenities, so. But, I mean, if you were gonna run it that close, where six gallons per person a day is the difference between whether you need a well or not, you're probably gonna get the well either way, right? So, I mean, you're not gonna, you're not gonna run it that close no matter what. So it's not gonna be the thing that tips it over the edge, really, so.
I'm more worried about the state cutting off our water because of it.
No, I don't.
Or slowing our, making us limited because we're using it frivolously.
I don't, I don't think that'll ever happen.
You can't, that's, that's unsanitized, sanitary, but they will tell you, you will restrict all sprinkling.
A splash pad would be one that would go.
Just stop for a second, please. They're gonna limit you to watering your lawn. They will, eventually, they could say, then we'll splash pad, but they're gonna start with watering your lawn. Your lawns don't die, they go dormant when they dry. It just takes a lot of water to get them to come back. So they are not gonna tell us that we can't have any more water, that ain't gonna happen.
Yeah, right.
So, but we're, we're, we're jumping through other hoops here when this main discussion is just to go on with the study. And that's the point that we need to address.
Yeah, I think that's kind of wrap this discussion up here, but where, where's the money gonna come? The thirty-nine thousand will come from the water fund, I'm assuming, right, to, to do the study?
Yes, it's gonna come from a water fund. We are sitting really well in that fund, and it would allow for the finance director to make a budget amendment to that water fund, but we do have plenty of funds there.
Okay, so we're, and, and no matter what, at some point, we have to do this study and find the location for a fourth well. And so, I mean, it's, it's money that's gonna be spent no matter what, and we have the money to do it in the water fund. It's not gonna add to the tax burden or anything like that, so. Do I have a motion to approve the study?
Motion to approve the study.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Merrill, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries five zero. Moving on to what is gonna be K four now.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, we have a resolution approving the special event permit application for Rum River BMX for the state qualifier. It'll be a two-day event that is scheduled to take place in the Isani indoor arena on Saturday, June twenty-fourth, from three P M. to nine P M., and Sunday, June twenty-fifth, seven A M. to five P M. The estimate, estimated number of people in attendance is eight hundred, and the applicant will provide eight additional portable restrooms for the event. RV parking will be allowed on the grass lot. As outlined in the parking agreement, an additional parking during the event will be restricted to Isani indoor arena parking lot, northeast and southeast lots of Bluebird Park, overflow parking in the soccer field lot, and no parking allowed at the dog park or Bluebird's main lot. The equipment requested has been received for five barricades, thirty, thirty no parking signs, there's a typo. And they're here to answer any questions.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Was it, was it confirmed that the soccer association is not holding an event at the same time for that parking lot use?
They are required to check with the, and get permission from the soccer.
Okay.
Jade, do you have anything you want to add to Stephanie's stuff there, or? All right.
I'm just gonna add that the BMX has been doing a fabulous job. I'm just gonna add that the BMX has been doing a fabulous job. And they, every year they came in and they've already stepped up to whatever they've been there required to do. And that's why I would have, never have a question delaying it, so.
Yeah, they do some great work over there. I mean, it's a team effort. I mean, they really.
Adults, children, little kids.
Uh, let's see, I have a motion from Councilman Collison. Do I have a, and a second from Councilman Lundin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. K five, resolution to consider approval of special event permit for North sixty-five Chamber of Commerce Jubilee Days.
Good evening again. This is the resolution approving the special event permit for Jubilee Days for twenty twenty-three. The North sixty-five Chamber of Commerce has submitted the event permit and are hosting again. A parade is scheduled to take place Thursday, July sixth, from three P M. to ten P M. And will use a route through downtown Iscanyi neighborhoods. Kids' Day is scheduled for Saturday, July eighth, from six A M. to four P M. in downtown Iscanyi. The estimated number of people to be in attendance at the parade is ten thousand and at Kids' Day is three thousand. And the applicant will be required to provide additional restrooms for the event and has provided a list of portable restroom locations. Parking during the event will be restricted as follows. No parking along the parade route on July sixth or on Main Street from Second Avenue to west of the railroad tracks from six to four P M. on the eighth. The applicant has requested assistance from the city of Iscanyi for road closures, traffic control, utility locates and signage, and has submitted a complete request with the application materials. Everything is very organized, as it usually is. Public addressing systems and live entertainment will be utilized during the event and the application submitted does require a hundred dollar cleanup deposit fee, which are on file with the city of Iscanyi. Posting of temporary signage and rental of the community center requires a permit application and fee and the applicant has requested for these fees to be waived. And we've already met with Ms. Button Dorf and she's here to answer any questions you may have.
Have we raised the fees before?
Yes.
Okay, motion to approve.
Melissa, do you have anything you want to add at all to Stephanie's stuff there? All right. I have a motion from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Collison. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero.
Hey Melissa, I got some old rodeo jubilee buttons. I will bring them in sometime because I'm sure we'll see you quite a bit till then, by then, before then. I, I remember when this all started, the jubilee, jubilee days. My father was the president of the Chamber of Commerce and we met many, many, many times on this. You guys have been a fixture for this event for all those years, so thank you.
All right, moving on to K six, the pedestrian crossing.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So as you may recall, back in two thousand and ten, the city was allocated some federal funds to do a pedestrian crossing across sixty-five. Unfortunately, the city was not able to obtain the, the remaining funds necessary to create that project moving forward. We did talk about this project a couple of years ago when it was brought forward at goal setting. And at that time, we had presented information for Bolton and Mink's team to write some grants as it was, take a considerable amount of grant writing. And his team was experienced in those grants. That came at a price tag that the council wasn't really looking forward to moving, wasn't looking to move forward with at that time. However, we have a new development that just came across Ms. Hill's side of my desk. And that is there are being state funds allocated for projects of great importance for infrastructure and safety from the Minnesota Management and Budget through the state system. And what Stephanie and I would like to request is that the council approve of us completing the application form. It needs to be completed in about a week's time. We do think that as we've looked at some crash data and we've looked at pedestrian crossing hits, concerns, bicycle concerns, crossing sixty-five and the timing of that, the walkway, the lighting there, signal. It's pretty dangerous and we think that we might be able to get some funding secured and use those federal funds as a match so it really wouldn't take city dollars to accomplish that project. Very, we're at the very introductory stage of this, but we wouldn't know anything until we could make that application and we do need council support for that.
I for one, remember that whole talk about that bridge. I think Dan, you were involved in a lot of that. And at the time, we are having an issue where we could put the bridge. And it was, one was over by Elaine's Flowers, the car wash, the hotel, while now the hotel's there, that, that isn't even viable at this point. So I don't know how they would do it, but I've looked at it many times. I've never been an opponent for it because at that time, there wasn't as many houses across the road. But I see the way people drive on sixty-five every day. I'm sure most of you have, and I'm sure George, you see it all the time. It's getting worse and worse and worse. County Road five, the traffic has probably doubled in the last five years. So it's inevitable, I mean, I watch people run red lights. I watched it last night, actually right out here.
People stay in the middle, in that center, and that's very dangerous too. They only get halfway and it's not, not very safe for that.
I think if we can do this without raising tax dollars on our residents, I think we should proceed with it. That's my opinion.
Mayor and Council, it does look like we have maybe just one viable, a location for this to go. So the timing is right to try to see if we can get the funding secured for it before those lands are, are gone. And then, yeah, I won't really have a good opportunity to, to place it. But we're also hearing more from developers as Ms. Hill, some of myself meet with them and they're, they ask about it. And we think that, well, now it's more of an awareness issue of how do, how are your people getting across to Coburn's? And if I was to put an assisted living facility over there, how are they going back and forth? So I think it's a good time.
So I, I have a question on that. You said it was federal funding for safety reasons. Could that say if we decided that the, that the path or the bridge wasn't a, you know, viable option given the location, could we use that for other things or is it only with that specification of that?
The federal funds that are allocated for the, is directly only specifically for this project. We either use it for this type of project as a pedestrian crossing. Could be overpass or underpass, but that is it, or we give the funds back.
Okay.
Because I think we still have those funds, the original.
We did, we double checked, yes.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, I was never a fan of it when we had, we were talking about spending city dollars on it. You know, I just, they, what was it, what was our portion gonna have to be? It was really substantial, I think, wasn't it?
One point seven million?
Yeah, one point seven.
Yeah.
Which we would try to get the grants, but you're not guaranteed, so it's really difficult to take that leap.
And that was, that was just our portion, then you had federal that was part of that.
That was on top of the federal, correct?
Yeah, right, right, so.
Federal funds of two million, one hundred and forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Yeah, so it is not cheap to, to do and I was never a fan of spending city dollars on it. But if the state's gonna give money away for projects and you know they're gonna spend it, they have it allocated for something. I mean, I guess it's just as good as anything else, right? You know, I mean.
Travis, on, on that intersection, I know there's a lot of crashes too. This is probably way far out there from where we are now, but could you ever see an overpass or underpass or anything going there where it's gonna be, you know, we're spending two, three million dollars now, why not just do it right the first time? Or consider, is that a viable option ever, you think? Or is that never gonna happen or?
Jason Cook did reach out to MnDOT last year to see if it was anywhere on their docket at all and their plans, and it is not anytime soon.
They didn't do Viking Boulevard, they're sure not gonna do County Road five.
If I remember correctly, I think the response to me was not in the fifty-year plan.
Okay.
What did you say, fifty?
Not in the fifty-year plan.
Okay.
Which those plans do change with data, right? It could change, but I don't think we would want to wait for it.
Sure.
And it is a very busy intersection. We have over twenty-three thousand cars going through on Highway sixty-five every day, as well as ten thousand on five, which is roughly the same number as they have on ninety-five and sixty-five in Cambridge. So it's very busy.
And there's an overpass there.
Applying for this grant, it does, does it interfere with anything else we may want to apply for in the future? I mean, could they say, well, you applied for this, so you?
This allocation is from, starts in twenty twenty-four. They ask these requests every year. We can request anything from twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-nine and rank them. At this time, we don't have anything that's.
Qualifiable?
Yeah, qualifiable that we can't request other grant funding for. The reason why this is qualifiable is because none of the state grants that they have would cover the full cost of it. And it is a barrier to safety for our residents and schoolchildren, people of all abilities really to cross.
I guess my main question is from the Highway sixty-five corridor from here to Blaine, there's a lot more concerning areas than Blaine and even Ham Lake, Coon Rapids area. Why have they rose this same concern? Do you know, their councils and asked for a bridge over Highway sixty-five or?
They.
Blaine and.
Why here and, and not there?
They are getting overpasses, two, two, three more in Blaine right now, which will include, when there's an overpass, at least there's a safe passage of one direction of traffic, so they're not crossing. And I know they do have plans to continue moving further north with those overpasses according to the Anoka County Highway Department, what they have said regarding their funding they just received.
Have we looked into the highway department and their plans in the future for maybe an overpass on five? Do they even have it in the works on the drawing board or anything?
Not within fifty years.
She just answered that a little bit ago.
I didn't quite catch that a hundred percent.
Not, it's not in their, in their plans at this time.
For fifty years.
Fifty years, okay.
I mean, say, say we, we got the grant and we didn't do it for another three years and the state or somebody said, hey, we're gonna do an overpass here. Could we apply that money towards that out of like a city, like a city funding portion of it? Even though it's not a dedicated walking path, it'd be an overpass which includes a walking, safe walking area?
I believe it would allow us, if that were to happen, to use that for a walking path portion of that. Um, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I am about ninety-eight percent sure they would allow the walking path portion to be covered. But, um.
But then you, that's the county's deal.
Yeah.
Five isn't ours.
Yep.
But usually the city has to, yeah, yeah.
Sorry.
Thanks.
It doesn't cost the city any funding other than staff time. And Ms. Hill Sime is pretty fantastic at doing this kind of write-up for these kind of things. So she's taking the lead on it and so I don't estimate it to take too much time at all to get this sent in.
Perfect.
Motion to approve, or did we already get that?
Not yet, no.
A motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve from Councilman Merrill and a second from Councilman Lundin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero.
And Mayor and Council, if I may, just because we have two commissioners in our audience tonight, I'd like to again express the importance of getting an intersection control at County Road five and East Joe Boulevard. As we haven't had much movement on it yet or lately again, but we, as a council and as a city, really do stress that we can get something for safety down there as well.
Ms. Wood, if I can add to that, remember I was talking to you earlier, all my wife was walking down there this morning. She's trying to cross by Quick Trip with her walking friend and it took them forever. You know, she said even lights, quasi-cross walk lights. I said, I ain't gonna stop anybody. Those lights don't mean nothing. I think stoplights are very essential to making this a lot safer corridor, not just for the cities, but for the county's level also.
And that, the, the first entrance on the Quick Trip, if you're heading west, there's so many people using that when it was technically was supposed to be used for the big trucks going to the diesel pumps. But they, they actually, traffic gets stopped there instead of them going forward to the turn lane, they're turning in there and that gets traffic backed up too. And I've seen a couple of cars get rear-ended there.
All I gotta say is, is one death worth those lights?
And also if we could try and push ahead getting maybe some more lights out there for pedestrians in the meantime for the, the county, needs to get moving on that.
Yeah, I think we've got our, our portion of the funding is planned out and ready to go. So as soon as, as soon as you guys are able, go. All right. Any questions on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
I just, I want to say thank you to everyone that donated. Canexus Energy, Bolton and Mink, Falcon National Bank, Minnesota Equipment, Minco and DW Companies. That's awesome that we're getting businesses in the community that are donating to what we're doing as a city.
Yeah, that's, that's huge. Some of it was Luminate Iscanyi, some of it was a slip and slide at the sledding hill for the summer. That's gonna be just so cool.
We did, we did order, because of these donations, we were able to order some of the larger stuff that we had scheduled for this year. So we put in our order today. If you want to see them, I can show you them, I have brought them.
Are they agreeing to store their light displays too?
No one has agreed to store, no. Sorry, Travis.
It's part of the deal. I thought that was part of the deal, wasn't it? Yeah.
So that's, that's great. We don't have to spend city taxpayer monies to fund this, so it ended up working out and we saved some taxpayers some money, so it's awesome.
That's great.
Worked out perfect. Hopefully every year we get something like that, that'd be pretty nifty.
I don't know, are they buying light displays that kind of showcase their business as sort of part of that too then or?
Some of them are, yes. Bolton and Mink did, they chose to purchase a pretty awesome giant tree and Minnesota Equipment chose a tractor. The generous donations from Canexus Energy and Falcon Bank and Minco and Wolf River Electric were all what allowed us to combine to purchase the other items.
Awesome. All right, I had a motion to approve from Councilman Lundin.
Second.
I have a second from Councilman Merrill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. I have a motion to adjourn from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Collison. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero, we are adjourned.
And no PDA meeting?